I'd like to call the meeting of the Monticello City Council to order. Would you please rise and say the pledge with me, and then Steve Kegel from Lodge Church will lead us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we are very grateful to have enjoyed a beautiful day, knowing you showed us who you really are in the sky, and it was wonderful to see. Father, we thank you for that, and this community of Monticello, and for the members of this commission that give their time, Lord, and want to make it a better place. We pray that you'll give them wisdom and opportunity to do that. We thank you in the name of Jesus.
Roll call, please, Jill.
Ms. Vogt?
Here.
Ms. Lively?
Here.
Mr. Carey?
Here.
Mr. Dunn?
Mr. Reed?
Here.
Mr. Burris?
Here.
Mr. Coon?
Here.
Mr. Broderick?
Here.
Mr. Brock?
Here.
Mr. Piercy?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Public participation, in-person participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. Those wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to commencement of the meeting and must address counsel from the seat and table provided. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. And we have one this evening. Bob Zimmerman?
I'm waiting for you guys to talk about.
No, we're not. You do it now.
This is the appropriate type of public comment.
First time I've been to the city council in Monticello. Second time.
Yeah, go ahead.
My comment still, I don't know what you guys are going to decide on the Freedom Park, but I just have to say, I mean, much as I want to honor veterans, I've made films about veterans, and there's spending a million dollars for a two-year-old statue seems excessive for 6,000 people in town. It just seems like it's a lot of money without getting more input from other people in this town who will complain about it eventually, but... And I don't know if there's just another way you can buy that, somehow you make things in Burke Park, or something before you go spend all this money, or at least put it up to a vote for the taxpayers. That's kind of why I just wanted to say that.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. Remote participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. At this time, members of the public are able to attend public meetings by web conference and to submit public comment by email, voicemail, or through web conference. Is there anyone this evening more?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items is listed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to participate.
Reed, did you check in at the appropriate time?
I'm not sure if I did or not. I just had trouble connecting.
I don't think so. It's after seven o'clock.
Okay, might I speak?
No, you may not.
Uh huh, okay.
Consent agenda. Approval of documents of action items is listed. Claims report. Claims dated March 26, 2024 through April 8, 2024. Meeting minutes, City Council meeting minutes, March 25, 2024. Permit report, March 2024. Fire report, March 2024. Police report, March 2024. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions of city staff before we proceed? Hearing or seeing them, they have a roll call, please, Jill.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Next is the mayor's report. Unfortunately, I don't have one this time, so we'll just move on, okay? A new business resolution, 2024-23, a resolution approving a contract for Innovation Parkway construction. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. If you remember last council meeting, we went forward with acquiring all the necessary right-of-way permanent easements and temporary easements to build the Innovation Parkway down off 105. We opened the bid. We had one bidder. It was Foyt's Construction. They've done a lot of work in town. They're a responsive bidder. We were pretty happy. The engineer's estimate was $963,000-ish dollars, and the bid came in at $924,163. That made everybody smile in that room. Probably the contractor felt like they left a little bit on the table, but the good news is we're going to have this done and more than likely under budget because I don't see a lot of complication there when we start digging in the ground, which is usually where you can run into some things. And we do have some contingency here for kind of garbage soils that we sometimes find around town, although we're not anticipating any there. So, the attached bid tab shows those bid results of the single bidder. The construction start date is tentatively late April, early May. We'll know more after the council gives permission to Mr. Summers to sign the contract so we can move forward with getting their documents back from them, and one of those is the schedule. So I don't have an official start date until we tell them the notice to proceed. The project substantial completion is scheduled for the middle of August 2024. Access to the effective properties will be maintained as access removal will not happen till after the parkway is completely constructed and entrances to their properties are complete. So there'll be no interruption to the bus service, to any of the businesses along there, and then we'll go from there. So the recommended action is for the council to discuss and approve the resolution 2024-23 as presented at today's meeting, a resolution approving a contract for Innovation Parkway construction.
Thank you, Jim. Is there a motion to approve resolution 2024-23, a resolution approving a contract for Innovation Parkway construction?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions of Jim? Any comments or questions?
You said August?
Substantial completions, August 2024.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Have a roll call, please.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Moving on to resolution 2024-24, a resolution approving a letter of intent to purchase personal property. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As discussed at the last two city council meetings, had the letter of intent to purchase one of the original Marine memorial statues, or also known as the Iwo Jima statue, for your consideration at this evening's city council meeting. If this resolution is approved, the city council will then be presented with a binding purchase agreement to discuss and potentially approve at your May 13 city council meeting. I provided you some of the excerpts from the letter of intent. It is not a contract. It is not binding on either party, but just a promissory note, if you will, that will continue in good faith towards a possible future agreement. Both parties agree to negotiate and enter into the binding purchase agreement within 45 days following the execution of this letter of intent. We shall provide the purchase agreement to Rodney Hilton Brown. The agreement terms, I outlined, I guess, seven or eight of them here. The purchase price is $1 million to be paid as follows. Do a refundable deposit of $50,000 upon execution of that purchase agreement, refundable deposit of $150,000 after the 90-day due diligence period, and then the $800,000 final payment on the purchase date. Again, due diligence period is 90 days after the purchase agreement execution. Purchase date spells out shall be honored before December 31 of this year. Transportation and storage fees shall be the responsibility of the city of Monticello. Currently, the storage fees are $400 a month. So in the best-case scenario, we would close on this property, if you will, near the end of this year. Buyer shall not shop the property in termination terms after 30-day written notice. One of the things in bold on your memorandum, insurance coverage during transport is still needed to be ascertained. I am working with a local insurance company to see if he can provide me with an underwriter to do that. Mariano Brothers, their carrier does not insure this property during transport, so I reached out to Mariano Brothers if they could get a different carrier that would offer insurance on it. I've not heard back from them. So it is recommend the city council discuss and take action on resolution 2024-24.
Can I ask a question? This is not a binding letter. There's no earnest money involved. If we choose on May 13 to not proceed, we're okay.
This is non-binding, and I've triple-checked with the attorney. If we were not, if the council, if the majority of the council does not want to entertain purchasing this, we have to go back to the drawing board and figure out some other, if it was the flag, whatever centerpiece looks like. So this is not binding at all.
Any other questions? Anybody? Motion to approve resolution 2024, a resolution approving a letter of intent to purchase personal property?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions of Mr. Summers?
I think this is possible only because city has done such a good job of stewarding the money throughout the years. I mean, I think the fact that we have an opportunity to do something pretty special, people look back and be real excited that we were able to have this opportunity and did it so. So, feel proud that we've got, that we are the city that can do it.
Anyone else?
Only to the point that all of my correspondence with my ward and people outside my ward that I deal with from day to day, there is virtually no support for this in the community.
Same here.
None.
Exactly.
People I've talked to.
And I believe we should, when we move forward, I believe we should move forward with a negative response. That's all I have.
I second that in regards to people saying we need to go ahead and work on infrastructure, given that the cost has, we need to go ahead and pay that forward to our infrastructure instead of anything else. I mean, we have enough parks. I mean, that can be on the back burner, if you want to say, but let's go ahead and get our infrastructure done prior to a statue.
Sorry. I don't think people I've talked to, they're okay with doing Burke Park. Let's do Burke Park, finish that. Maybe if we do something out the north end of town, let's do something a little less elaborate.
A lot less expensive.
A lot less expensive. There's other places this money could be, which we can discuss at a later date.
I'm in agreement. Thank you.
And getting insurance for it might take it out of our hands anyway because I think we'll be hard-pressed to find somebody to insure this project, getting it here.
Besides, I'm concerned if you can't, if we can't get insurance for it, it's done, even before, even before May 13.
Exactly.
Yep. I do want to tell Terry how much I appreciate all of the work that he's put into this.
Yes.
It's been in our direction, and I think he's done a very fine job of finding information for us.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, the information may not be palatable to all of us right now. I do appreciate your efforts, and I think it's important to follow through. I don't, this letter of, this letter of intent really doesn't do anything. It just gives us two more weeks to think about it and talk about it, and I think that's important. I think we should have public discussion, or not public discussion, but open discussion for us at the next council meeting. So I, that's why I'm kind of, I think it's important that we do respond to the gentleman out east, I can't remember his name, Rodney. I shouldn't be able to forget that, but... Anyone else?
Just for clarification, two things. This was in your budget, correct? This, so this was not, we didn't sneak up on anybody. This is not a brand-new thing that came out. This was in the budget, but since we started talking about it and getting it, getting it to it, now we're getting people who didn't pay attention to the budget jumping on it. Two, didn't you sit here and tell us that there have been adjustments, so we're still within the budgeted price as it stood?
Yeah, I ran a spreadsheet this morning just to kind of wrap up what's been done today. So the original two projects, the total for that was $6.3 million. And that did not include design for Freedom Park. It included the statue. The only thing it did not include was the design of Freedom Park, and that was the $6.3 million. That's why I added about $400,000, and we allocated $6.7 million. So I gave enough space in there for engineering and design. Then the 2024 costs, because Burke Park was approved, master plan was approved in 2020, Freedom Park master plan was approved in 2022, the engineers escalated construction costs accordingly. So that is included in the 2024 cost and the additional items. The enclosure, conservation work, once it got on site, transport, and enclosure design. So that number jumped to $9.3 million. That's when they had the $2 million enclosure. So we were over budget by nearly $2.6 million.
Okay.
Then, after our meeting in March, we said, well, we go back to the drawing board, get us a more palatable enclosure. So the Freedom site plan was revised from the enclosure, and the Iwo Jima sculpture went from $1.25 to $1 million. There was also some revised site plan. The plant reduced the number of parking stalls, the path shrunk a little bit. So the first revision to Freedom brought it down to $7 million, $7.1 million. So we're over budget about $364,000. Then we looked at what can we do to Burke Park, and we thought they had, the engineers had almost $1.6 million for the playground. So we did an ex part for roughly $400,000 volunteers and public works installed. So you cut that in half, the playground for Burke Park, then you got a deduct of $785,000. So right now, barring any other situation, the total for two parks is $6.2 million, means we're $460,000 under the $6.7.
Good work.
Anyone else?
I just think this is a, this is an opportunity that can't pass up. And to terms of infrastructure, I think the city has done a great job of doing stuff to our streets, State Street, we're going to do Buchanan and Grants, I'm assuming probably Main Street. Our streets are in great shape, and I just think we could, we will look back if we don't go forward. Depending on, I mean, we want to make sure that we are fine with all the insurance and all that. I mean, this is an opportunity for us. Now, I've had some discussion with Terry about, I, as everybody here knows, I'm a big component of Oberheim Park or some sort of rec fields, and it certainly came up high on our strategic plan. You know, I think, from what I understand, the infrastructure to even get things going out at Oberheim Park is probably over $5 million to do that. So we'll have to figure out, even if we don't go forward with the statue, we're still have a significant amount of money just to get that project up and going, and we'll see what happens with the foundation fundraising and things like that. But, anyway, my feeling on that. And I do, I do think that this gives us an opportunity to get more input from the public because I think right now the input that we've, that we've heard is like, oh my gosh, we got this, you know, high sticker price on a statue, isn't there a better place to put that? But I don't know that we've given opportunity to hear from a lot of other people. So, you know, this gives us some, some time here to say, okay, what does the public here think? You know, we haven't had, haven't had the city council, haven't had the Journal Republican in a city council meeting in a while, so I think the public is maybe, as, they haven't been, they're a little more unaware than they have been in the past because of that.
Okay. Like to say, for what Rodney said, with everything being within budget, there still are things that have come to light with the statue that may have caused some of us to have our reservations, the actual purchase price, the enclosure, insurance, I think that's, just particularly with the statue in general.
Right.
It's caused some of us to question it.
And this has been, this has been publicized, wasn't this publicized when we put out the, what do they call that, the master plan that created for both of them? I mean, I think it was, I think it was covered in some paper, maybe not the journal, but I think it was probably in the champagne paper. It's not a secret that we have been studying this. So, people, I haven't had that many comments. I don't know how many of you have had a lot. I haven't had that many, but...
A lot?
Had to hear that. Anyone else?
I second Paul in regards to...
Right. No, I agree with him too. Do I have a motion? No.
I have a motion.
We have a motion?
And a second.
And a second.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments before we vote? Hearing or seeing them, they have a roll call.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
No.
Mr. Carey?
No.
Mr. Reed?
No.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
No.
Mr. Brock?
No.
And Mr. Piercy?
No.
Thank you.
Motion fails.
Thank you very much. So we will proceed to the auditors. My understanding. Yes, sir. Yeah, we will not pursue the purchase of the statue. Exactly. And we'll go to... Plan B or an alternative, or whatever. Right. Yes. The park is still viable. We just aren't going to have a million-dollar statue. That sounds fair. Anyone else have anything to say before I move on to their alderman report? So you have to talk. Mike Coon?
I don't have anything tonight, no.
Eric? Wendell?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Rodney?
Erin? Yes, we had our reunification drill on March 27, and our city staff, Monticello Fire, Monticello Police, I can't, I can't thank them enough for what they did. I'm thinking most of the parents had no idea how many of our city staff members and first responders were involved. It was a cold day. It was not comfortable. Some of the good feedback that came from it was some of the people who were standing at the doors, making sure nobody came in, who were exposed to. They could have gone out to relieve some of the city employees who were standing outside that entire time. So, you know, some really good comments that came from it. I feel like if there was an emergency in any of the schools in Payette County, to go to their reunification spot, we are ready. And just to try to help provide clarification, the reason that we would come off-site from our school grounds would be if first responders had to go to our school building. We cannot have parents trying to pick students up at the same time that first responders are going in, and we can't have parents clogging the streets. We need to keep the roadways open, and so that's why we would take students off-site, have parents come pick them up, so that first responders have access to the scene. But I felt very proud to, you know, see the response from, from our community in that exercise for a district that is not in Monticello.
Cool.
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
No, sir?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Police chiefs report. Rob?
Real quick, thank you, Mr. Mayor, to kind of piggyback on that reunification drill. Went very well. For what it is, hopefully we'll never have to use it, but, I mean, whether you like or not, everything's coming here, so we were prepared as best we can. And again, like I've said before, I would put this up with any Champaign County district because I don't even know, short of them walking to a nearby church or Moose Lodge or anything else they have, I don't think they've done it to the scale, sorry, I don't know if they've done it to the scale that we did two weeks ago. So this went very well for really first time, you know, writing the book on it, and it was great. Speaking of what called just came in, we are seeing an uptick in domestics and mental health issues, which we, I met with Tony Kirkman with mental health a week and a half ago. We've come to the agreement, if there's something that we can refer to them as opposed to a jail option or just kind of shrugging our shoulders and going away, we are going to utilize that. They have, the state of Oklahoma and their infinite wisdom has really decreased some of the grant money that they're able to operate in, but for certain things, they do have a worker for substance abuse and things like that, and I would say about 75% of our issues stem from that. So if we can get them somewhat clean, we can into a mental health facility. And then we have made a conditional offer to Casey Wooten. He's on our fire department, so as long as he passes all the tests he needs to, he will start the police training institute in Champaign in May.
Fire chiefs report. John?
Mayor, I want a third, what Mary said and what Rob said, it was a great exercise. We must have 15 different departments, police, fire, public, you know, public works, all working together. And it's not just, the example was a fire at the Bemen School, but if it was a shooting or a weather-related issue in any of the schools in Payette County, everybody did a great job, especially at the church, getting the kids back together. So as you see on my spreadsheet here, we met several times. We met at least twice in March before we did this, and several times in February and January preparing for this. So a lot of work went into it, but I think it turned out well. And if something happens, we're not winging it. I think we have an idea what we're doing. So Mary and Matt Roehlholm and Aaron and everybody at EMA did a great job putting this all together, so... So, I'm proud of what we did, and I'm proud of what everybody did in the county. On March 2nd, we had a, the Payette County Firefighters Association had some training out by the driving range. I don't know if you saw a couple buses out there. We got those donated. We had about nine departments out there. We probably had 20, 25 to 30 firefighters out there. We tipped a bus on top of a car, and then we put a dummy in there and got the person out worked on getting on a bus in case we had a bus accident with kids and such. So, we all worked together, and we all did different things to, to, you know, like we were getting kids out of a bus or a victim out of a car. It was, that was some great training, and we worked together, several different departments to make this happen. And on March 6th, the first responders played the Golden Eagles basketball game, and we got our butts kicked pretty bad, so. And I think that was a warm-up for March 9th, which is when the Golden Eagles won the state championship. So, and we, of course, brought them into town, police, fire, and so forth. And I thought it was pretty exciting. I couldn't, they had such great smiles on their faces when I got off that, their bus and saw the fire trucks and stuff like that. It was awesome. So, we were really proud to do that, and proud of the Golden Eagles. They did a great job. We had a, 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 a Fire, a Fire County Firefighters Association meeting at Kirby Hospital at the end of the month. We do that every other month. Great turnout from all the different departments there, which is great to see us all work together, so. And then the reunification, of course, was awesome. We ran about 40 calls last month. Some training we did, we had to do manual, we have to do every year, sexual harassment, Alzheimer's, and bloodwork pathogens. We took care of that. We did some elevator training too. Seeing size up, we actually, on the Thursday, the second Thursday, we, several firefighters picked their house in town, and we would go up to it and decide where the fire would be. We'd park the vehicle. We'd actually pull the hose off and deploy the hose so that we could do it rapidly and do it properly. So we did that, and then the last Thursday of the month, we did vehicle maintenance, of course, and equipment maintenance. And we did a tour of Top Lane. Went through their, either silos and all the, where they have all their shut-offs and things like that. So we kind of got an idea for that. So, pretty bad, busy, busy March, but keep it rolling. So, thank you.
Very much, John. Terry, city administrators report.
I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the reunification. I think it was a great training. I think it was a great experience. I think the debriefing afterwards, you know, you always have a hiccup here or there. Those were identified, I think, in short order. I thought I was getting alerts on my phone as somebody that's a responsible person in charge, maybe I'm not at the church or I'm not on the bus coming in, but I have a lot of resources at my disposal, and I'm getting these alerts that we are the, the location, the students went from the school to this location to get on the buses. We're leaving Beaman. We just passed the high school. I mean, it was well-laid out that everybody knew, and I think most got the alerts, some didn't, I think, but that was nice that I knew exactly what was going on in, in my office. I thought, I thought it was a great training, and I would concur. I think we're well above for a lot of, lot of other districts.
And not just in the state, but, I mean, Sheriff Vogelzang has mentioned his daughter teaches out, out of state, and it's just not being discussed as much as it should be, so. Yeah. We have a lot of people in charge in the room here who are doing a great job.
And then, the, the council desks were delivered last week. They should be installed by our public works guys for, ahead of your next meeting.
Good.
That's it? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.